29th, 7 o'clock. And tonight, we have a series of committee meetings. We do have several presentations. And you might notice that the dais looks a little bit different because all of the council members are not up here. On the advice of our law director and looking at best practices, what we have found is that the specific committee that meets and the members that comprise that committee are the ones that are up here, and they are the ones that would direct any questions. So that's why you'll see council members coming up and down as we move to the different committees tonight. Our first one is the City and Safety Services. And I might mention one other thing, that we do have presentations. And when we do, we have a number of them tonight, I think, two or at least two or three. So, welcome. We're glad you're here. It's always helpful. We always learn a lot. What we try and do, so we've got time for everybody and also time for questions, is try and limit the presentations, if you can, to about 10 minutes. And then that allows up to about five minutes for council members to ask any questions. So we'll start with City and Safety Services, and it's chaired by Councilmember Butler, and he's joined by Councilmembers Katzis and Fall.
Thank you, President Isley. Within the City Service Safety Committee, we have three bullet points: a presentation from Ms. Spencer Minnick of the COMCOR program, wastewater treatment plant updates with the de-watering project, and a discussion spearheaded by our mayor regarding the National Endowment of the Arts. First, we'll begin with our presentation this evening from Ms. Spencer Minnick of the COMCOR program. If you recall, about a year ago, we were presented with a proposal by Andrew Chiki, the Assistant Director, Arts Parks and Recreation, as well as Ms. Lauren Brovica with COMCOR, and Amy Bond of Hopewell. And so this is a follow-up from what occurred then over this past year. So I'll turn it over. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, like Ken said, my name is Spencer Minnick. I am finishing up my position within the COMCOR program at the Community Center in partnership with Hopewell. So we thought that it would be a great idea to come back a year later and show what we were able to do with this position and what came out of it. I don't know if you can see. So to begin, just to kind of recap on why the position was created. So, before I started, Hopewell decided to start giving memberships to their patients to the Community Center in order to promote physical activity and overall wellness. But the problem was, there was kind of a disconnect. When they gave these memberships out, they weren't sure who was using them, how often, and if they were getting the support that they needed, because there wasn't a person there. They could always pull the data, but what if they weren't really getting the workout that they needed? What if they were just coming and not staying for very long? So, that's kind of why I was created, in my position, to be that person that clients can go to. So to give you guys kind of an idea of what I do on a daily basis, my description has a couple of things involved with it. So the first thing that I do is, I'm kind of the friendly face at the Community Center. When people get their memberships through Hopewell, they're given a card with my face on it and my name, so that they know who to go to. They know who to seek out for help if they ever need it. So when they come see me, I can give them a tour of the facility. I can tell them everything that their membership includes, whether that's the walking track or the basketball court, just to make sure that they know what they can get out of it. Following that, I can meet with them on a weekly basis, twice a week if they wanted, via appointments or through my open hours that we established, which basically meant that, for a certain period of time during the week, they could come see me and they knew I was going to be there, and that they knew that they could meet with me without scheduling an appointment. So by doing that, we started working on goal-setting, trying to figure out what exactly they wanted to accomplish at the gym, and then moving forward from there, showing them what the machines look like, giving them a tour of the machines, making them feel a little bit more comfortable at the gym, because I think we can all agree that we all feel a little uncomfortable at the gym at times. So by doing that, I can make sure that they're on track and that they're accomplishing the goals that they'd like to set. From there, I started to track their data. So I have an Excel sheet that I send to Hopewell every two weeks that tells them who exactly I met with, what did we talk about, what did they do, what goals are they setting, are they joining, you know, fitness classes and things like that? So that, when they go back to Hopewell and they're meeting with their providers and their counselors, when they tell them, "You should be more physically active. You're at risk of type 2 diabetes," then they know exactly what they're doing. From there, I decided to also do a little bit of program planning as well, so that the community in general was affected and not just Hopewell clients. So, one thing that I did, which I'll talk about later, is I color-coded the gym. That was something that really helped the Hopewell clients, but everyone could also benefit it from as well. So you walk in and you see blue on a machine, then you know that means arms. So we're just creating an inclusive environment. And like I said, from there, I make sure that Hopewell knows what's going on and the Community Center at the same time. So what? What happened? So I have two examples I wanted to talk about, but I won't use their names. The first example, you can see in the chart, we'll just call him John. John was one of the first people that I actually met when I started my position. Before we started meeting, he was not physically active. A lot of times, he played video games and he would become socially isolated. But we started meeting on Wednesdays, and we'd walk a mile together and also play basketball. From there, we started meeting on Thursdays as well, doing the same thing. From there, I connected him with another fellow COMCOR member from FANS, which is Friends, Allies, and Neighbors of Athens County. And they started playing basketball on Mondays. So now he's getting that social interaction as well. And recently, he joined a men's fitness group through Hopewell that meets at the Community Center on Tuesdays. So this particular person went from not being physically active at all to now going to the gym four times a week, which is a huge difference. Another member gave me a quote. She said, "You are such a good coach. Having you here has been a great incentive for me to walk more." With her, I walk about two miles with her when she comes on Fridays. So not only are they being physically active, but they also get that social component as well. So we'll talk about numbers a little bit. So these are the numbers from November to April, the year that I was not at the Community Center. These are for Hopewell members. So there was 41 Hopewell memberships active during this time, and 486 logins. So that means that those 41 Hopewell members came to the gym in total 486 times. So when I was there, we were able to increase the number of Hopewell memberships to 87 and 809 total logins, which is double the numbers, which I think is awesome and very good for me. But also, like I said earlier, what about the rest of the community? I wasn't just there for Hopewell clients. We basically wanted to create an inclusive environment at the gym, so that everyone felt welcomed and that they could meet their health and wellness goals. So one thing I did was I focused on healthy eating. So this is the bulletin board that we have at the Community Center. And all of the folders are healthy recipes, and then there were kind of some free apps that they could download, and then an interactive fridge, which I'm very proud of. You could open the fridge and the freezer to see what you can place inside. Another thing we did was color-code the gym. So when you walk in and you want to get cardio, you want to do something with cardio, you look for the red sticker on the machines, which makes it so much easier. And then also, I decided to do a New Year, Even Better You program, which was six weeks of free programming for all members, not just Hopewell clients. That focused on healthy eating, fitness exercises, and things like that. So, moving forward, they already was able to do interviews for the next member. They would start in August and then run the same 10 and 1/2 month contract until June. So we're really excited. I think it's a good thing that the member always changes, because what I think is inclusive at the gym might be something different for the next member. So the ideas and the new ideas are always flowing and changing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minnick. I appreciate your presentation. We will pause for a moment to see if council members have any questions or comments for clarification or curiosities. Yes, Councilmember Katzis.
I think that the inclusiveness is really important, because I know a lot of people who go, they don't know which machines to use, and that includes, you know, younger people. And that our gym is different than a lot of other gyms, where they don't really have rigid age separation. And I think that that's important, and I think that expanding it beyond Hopewell, because we can all use, you know, a better you in the new era.
Absolutely.
Thank you. This is definitely worth the project.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Councilmember Katzis.
Member Butler, thank you. So, what I was thinking about, is this something that happens in the for-profit gyms at this point, that there's, I mean, it almost seems like it's like a manager that really oversees the overall experience? And, you know, I think...
It's something that they could look into. With COMCOR, the AmeriCorps program, we focus in the nonprofit realm.
Yes.
So a for-profit gym, correct, Lauren, would not qualify for a member like that. But it is something to consider, that person, yeah.
I was considering if it was, this is like kind of a trend, because I think about retail, I think about, you know, you think about a website. All of that stuff is designed to engage the user. And here we have the Community Center that didn't have that engagement. So it makes perfect sense, kind of, you know, hindsight is awesome. But I just didn't know if that's something that other places have, or is this something that's kind of just special to our, you know, our clients that are coming into the Community Center?
Yeah. I think that's a great question. From my knowledge, I don't know of a position like this in other gyms. A lot of other gyms will focus mostly on personal trainers and maybe even a dietitian, but members would have to pay for that service. I think we're unique to say that my services are free for everyone. So even if you come in as a paying member, you wouldn't have to pay me. Basically, I walk in and I figure out how to make the gym better for everyone.
So you work for a broader population than someone seeking a personal trainer or something like that?
Yeah.
And it sounds like also the benefits would be, are going to be greater, just for achieving that, you know, at least that base level of health?
Absolutely. Especially because those who are most at risk are the ones who are of low socioeconomic status. They can't afford a personal trainer. They can't afford a dietitian. So to have someone like me there, who's kind of advocating for them, is really important to have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, President Isley.
Well, I've been noticing some of the changes at the Community Center. Now I know who to thank. The color coding and things like that, it's been great. So, good.
Well, I'm glad that there's a noticeable difference.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will add, Ms. Minnick, I will add, is a curiosity for us and the administration, so twofold, I have a question and a comment here. My curiosity is, if the city continues to support this endeavor, will there be a bridge between your departure and the renewal? So if you're able to comment on that?
Yeah. That is a great question, and that's something that I do get asked a lot. Right now, I'm working on a continuation plan, as I'm putting it, because there will be a gap between when my contract ends and the next AmeriCorps member begins. Our support in that is that I'm creating a site finder, where the next member can easily access it and see exactly, in my words, what I was able to do. But also keeping it open to say, "You don't have to do it exactly like I did, but this is what worked best for us." And to make sure that Andrew and Amy and Lauren are always there to answer any questions that they have, so that it's a smooth process. But on the other hand, there's also the Hopewell clients, making sure that they feel supported even when I'm not there. So what I'm working on now, as I'm finishing up, is talking to them about, well, what's our summer plan? What's our workout schedule going to be like in the summer? And then explaining that the next person will be new, but they'll be just as supportive and engaging.
Wonderful. Yeah, thank you. Actually, you answered my questions, and I appreciate that. Any comments? Anything from the mayor's office, or Mr. Chiki?
I would, sure, I'd like to comment. And Spencer, you've done a great job in the gym.
Thank you.
And all the work that you've put in. And, you know, I was at the AmeriCorps kind of recognition event that was in the Community Center. And when you look around at how many volunteers there are serving, not just here in Athens, but countywide, it's staggering. And without these volunteers through AmeriCorps, through COMCOR, through Vista, you know, we would not be able to get half-done that we get done as a county in southeastern Ohio. So you've done some great things in the Community Center. I just want you to know that, from me to you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I guess, yeah, that covers it. No further questions or comments? Thank you again, and appreciate your service work.
Yeah. Thank you for having me.
And good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Our next talking point this evening for the committee is the wastewater treatment plant, specifically the de-watering project. If you recall, we've discussed this in a few past meetings, and we're updating our requests here. Specifically, the Service Safety Director is hopefully authorized in turn to, this would be, the legislation would hopefully be authorized to move forward with funding for moving this project and updates regarding the needs within the city. I know the, President Isley had a comment on this as well, and we may hear from the mayor's office. Thank you.
It was just some information that the Service Safety Director provided at the mayor's and auditor's meeting about this de-watering equipment, and this is for the design at this point. And that a variety of possibilities are being considered, either a press or a belt or a centrifuge mechanism for it, and that this is part of what will help us, help the city to decide on the most efficient method. And I think that Councilmember Reisner had had a question whether or not we were going to continue to spread the sludge on our own 60 acres, and the response was yes, that we would continue to do that.
Thank you.
You mean, spread de-watered sludge?
De-watered sludge.
Isn't that concentrating it a huge amount?
I don't know. It's a good question.
Well, I thought one of the issues about this whole process was that our acreage was getting over abundant in nutrients. So if you're putting de-watered, that's also, that's concentration. So I'd like, I mean, if the EPA, if the state EPA has okayed this, then it's probably, it's within those guidelines. But it's an interesting, because we did spend a lot of time trying to get extra land to...
We did. And as you know, and you just mentioned a minute ago, you know, there's this fine balance between over having your soil being, nutrient content is too high in what we're spreading on the fields, because we are also, you know, currently sending some of our sludge, if I'm not mistaken, I'll have to double-check on that, to landfill, because we are currently belt-pressing a lot of our sludge. One of the things that I've learned is that with belt-pressed or centrifuged sludge, because you have de-watered it to a certain extent, it still is farm-appliable. You can still do that with that level of sludge. But for our 80 acres or 80 acres in Cannonville, we're reaching the edge of what we can do. And it's also been a timing issue. Every time we have an extremely wet spring like we had this year, you know, it's very difficult for the farmers to get, for us to get the trucks out there, for the sludge to be applied. And that becomes a challenge for the farmers, too, because they want to make sure they can't apply after things, after a certain point in which the crops have been sown into the ground, and it's complicated. Let me say that. And we are, this will allow us to look at, as President Isley indicated, we'll look at belt-press, screw-press, as well as centrifuges, which, if you're de-watering, and we are left with no other choice than to send it to landfill, you are decreasing the tonnage that you're sending to the landfill because of the amount of moisture that you're removing from the landfill. And unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, sending sludge to a landfill is an EPA permissible operation. It's, I don't think it's optimal. I think that the way you should go is to field-apply.
Maybe expanding some of the farmers that can take it. I mean, we were trying to do this other exchange, which didn't work out for whatever reasons. Also, like, you know, the old adage is reduce, reuse, and recycle. You know, I don't see reuse, though lots of places they do, do graywater applications. I don't think our population warrants that. But I think that looking at efficiency and, I wouldn't like to see it going to the landfill. So expanding that market, so to say, would be my preferred option for all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Katzis? Thank you.
You know, and I don't know if anybody here is going to have the answer, but how much acreage do we need? I mean, is it just that we need new acreage, and we currently have 80 acres and it's kind of reaching its max limit? Or if we had a new parcel that was 10 or 15 acres, would that be sufficient for some time, or?
Like I said, I believe our current acreage, we'll double-check with Service Safety Director on this, or the plant manager, but I thought it was around 80 acres that we were spreading that on. And we've had that land for quite some time in applying it. I could also go back and look at that, for how long we have been field-applying, and since we're monitoring the soils, what that looks like in terms of the increase in nutrients, what that slope looks like, and kind of use that as a way to determine if we were to look at 80 acres somewhere else of farmable land, would it have to be 80, like you just said? Or could it be less? Would it need to be more? I had mentioned this before, and that is that, you know, there's other possibilities out there in the world for being able to utilize sludge, and that would be a digester system. But again, that would be some private entity wanting to come into Athens County and set up shop and receive our sludge to create energy. But that's...
That sounds like a job creator, so...
It kind of does.
Just to mention.
All right. Thank you.
Yes. Any other comments? Thank you, everyone. I was unsuccessful in contacting Director Stone, so I appreciate everyone's help this evening. Lastly, we will have on our agenda discussion regarding the National Endowment of the Arts, and this, again, is spearheaded by our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I was approached by the mayor of Somerset, Ohio, and he alerted me during the last mayor's Partnership for Progress meeting, which was, by the way, in Somerset. And that was, that there is another round for the National Endowments for the Art granting mechanism. Grants are due mid-August. And one of the things that we are looking at in Athens is a collaborative grant with Ohio University College of Fine Arts, with Dean Shafto and one of his faculty members, Scott Dodd. We've been in communication with him, so has Emily Beveridge, who's the director at Arts West, and the director for Arts Parks and Recreation, Terry Moore. And what we're looking at is the possibility of crafting a grant to where we are engaging with the College of Fine Arts on bigger projects here in the city of Athens. What Somerset was able to do was get, create a grant that, as Mayor Johnson was calling it, it was pop-up art, pop-up murals, and pop-up symphony, to where the Columbus Symphony engaged with the residents in Somerset, and it fit within that granting mechanism. I'm not going to say that that's exactly what we're looking at, but it's certainly an interesting model. I did meet with a symphony member from Columbus and engaged with him at length about the possibility of having something that would be the five school districts in Athens County, the middle school here in Athens, the high school, one of the school districts. I was thinking more centric, but it could be county-wide, too, to where we're going after this grant on a larger scale. And having kids of that level, P through 12, engaging with those in fine arts who are in the music, in the school of music, as well as with the Columbus Symphony. The Columbus Symphony is very interested in engaging in communities in endeavor like that. So that is likely to be one of several elements that we feed into this particular National Endowments for the Arts grant. A lot of work to do on that yet, and we'd certainly enjoy getting some input from council as I continue to craft this, knowing full well that you're going on recess in the month of July.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Yes. We'll start with Councilmember Fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
People always realize, they always wonder why we spend so many hours in meetings, and this is exactly why we do, because of the information that comes from other communities, just like Athens is a leader in certain areas. Other communities are leaders, and we can always learn. I would, in any sort of conversation, I would like to make sure that there's a sliding scale, and that if it is for just Athens School District, that we maybe look at people who were, who are within, like, Athens City, who aren't part of the school district, to be able to take part on a sliding scale, because we know that there's other, there's some weird areas of Athens that are not part of the Athens School District. So I think it's very exciting, and I'm very supportive. I think that with so many of the cuts that we see through education, these are the things that really make a broad educational experience, and I'm very appreciative of the Columbus Symphony for doing these sort of things.
Thank you. Yes, President Isley?
Just a question on your process. You mentioned a mid-August deadline that you're working towards, and would you need an ordinance that authorizes the city to be able to apply and to have that moving through in June then?
I believe so. I would like to do that. And even if it carries over into the first Monday of August to where we attach an emergency clause to do it, I mean, however, we can make this happen, but we're going to be working really hard over the next several weeks to pull this grant together. We are getting assistance, by the way, of the mayor of Somerset, Tom Johnson, on putting something together, which is very helpful.
Super.
He also works with the Vaynovich School, so he's local. He's easy to get ahold of.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Katzis?
You know, and actually, President Isley asked a lot of the questions I was going to ask, but is there, is there a match? Is there, so if you could go into details, kind of, what we might be looking, I mean, it sounds like it's pretty, it's in its infancy, so probably, why don't you tell me where we're at, where we're going?
I'm glad you raised that, Member Katzis, because something I failed to mention, it's an equal match, up to $200,000. And we will certainly keep that in mind, and that's part of working this in partnership with Ohio University as we're looking at this, that it would be equal in all aspects when we apply for this.
Do they take, I assume that they take in-kind as match?
I believe they do.
Okay. That would be something. It sounds like a lot of in-kind is already happening, so...
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I, too, Mayor, have a couple of questions and comments. Do you know if, in regards to Somerset, do you know if the Ohio Arts Council was also part of that endeavor?
They were.
Okay.
There was, as I understand it, assistance from Donna Collins.
Okay, super.
From the Ohio Arts Council. And as a side note to that, Donna Collins was also at the meeting up in Somerset and approached me and encouraged the city of Athens to apply for this... approached me and encouraged the city of Athens to apply for this particular grant. So that was a good sign as well.
Super. Thank you. Well, I also want to offer my support. I appreciate your thinking out of the box and forward thinking and progressive thinking. I echo what Councilmember Fall said as well, that for us as a community to remain teachable and that if we're able to pick up points and ideas and suggestions from other cities that are enhancing their community, and we can mimic that or do something similar or better here, then I'm all for it. So, and again, when we enrich our community through the arts, I think it's, everyone benefits. So I appreciate that and look forward to working on this with you.
Thank you, Member Butler. It's one of the reasons we all attend things, conferences like the National League of Cities or this week attending the International Town Gown Association, is that it is, we are all sharing best practices and gleaning ideas from each other.
Thank you. Thank you. President Nysli, that concludes my committee. Thank you.
Great. So we'll now move on to the committee of the whole, so if the other council members will take a moment for you to come join us. We'll give you just a moment to get computers on and microphones on, and we'll be ready to start then. Our first agenda item is the refuse recycling, and you'll notice that it has a note, the increased support costs and a one-year contract extension. And I believe council members do have a copy of the marked-up version of the contract renewal with some suggested changes and comments on it. And I do have some questions, and having read through the contract, but I'll start with other council members, or does anybody have any questions they would like to address?
I think that when we talk about costs, we always remember that sometimes these processes seem, why do we have to do it? And why do we have to increase costs? We're under a tight budget, but a lot of the refuse and recycling processes are really expensive to start with, because you're dealing with a lot of volatile costs, gas and insurance and tipping fees and those sort of things. So I think that one has to realize that costs go up, and we usually negotiate a three-year contract instead of negotiating a whole year, a whole new contract. It sometimes makes sense to just extend it. We do that with AEP sometimes and other, so when the contract is working, why get rid of it when we just extend it?
Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you, President Nysli. I just wanted to make sure that I understood the costs associated with the contract, the increased costs. In the second dealing with disposable costs and service payments, my understanding is that the contract itself is going up from approximately $80,000 to $111,000, and that is primarily due to the, if I'm right, due to the recent addition of the composting, and correct me if I'm wrong on that end. The other question I had in that particular section, it says that the, based on the number of accounts, it goes from 8,500 accounts to 4,500 accounts. I just wondered what the difference in accounts is based on, if somebody could explain that to me.
And that was one of my questions, too. That's on page five, and there's, it's under disposal costs and service payments, and there's quite a variation in the number of potential units. And if we have somebody, oh, we do, we have somebody here who can help us with some of the information. Yes. Please come up to the podium. Yes.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Underwood, Executive Director at Athens Hawk Recycling. Originally, when the bid packet was designed and the RFP was put out for this contract, I think the city stated, at my request, I asked how many units there were, how many residential units. So that's where that 8,500 comes from, but in reality, it's more closer to 4,500.
Okay.
Could you explain what a unit is for us?
Yeah, so with the recycling support fee and with the mandatory trash in the city of Athens, so a single-family home would be, you know, a single unit or a single utilities billing account. So that 8,500 and that 4,500, that's what that number is referring to. So when the contract was bid initially by me, you know, I based a lot of my numbers off of that 8,500, but really digging into it in, over the course of the past three years, we've narrowed down that it's closer to 4,500. You have all these multi-units in there, which really complicates matters, which is very confusing on the numbers.
Is a three, how do you define like a duplex or a three unit?
It all depends on how the landlord handles it, whether there's one water account associated with however many units, or each individual rental unit has a water account or utilities billing account.
So you can potentially have four or five unit mini-apartment as being one.
Correct.
So it's not like we only have 4,500 units worth of recycling and refuse going through. I mean, it is a difficult, we are a unique city.
Yeah. And that's a number that continually changes, you know, I do believe.
Okay. So my main question is just wanting to assure that we have enough clarity on those number of units so that you wouldn't get short-changed, and so that we're accurately representing in the contract the number of units.
Yeah, so we do have a formal list of all the account numbers associated with that to get to that.
Okay, good. That's helpful.
That 4,500 is not the exact number, basically because of changes, but yeah, we do have a somewhat accurate count.
Okay. Pages five and eight also refer to 32-gallon containers, which we have heard from citizens from time to time about how it would be helpful to have a uniform size of trash containers. I mean, I think that's a good idea long-term to standardize that, but I wasn't sure from the language in here what the plans were on when to do that. It does say that items placed curbside on page five, under sticker system and special halls, items placed curbside for pickup but not contained in the 32 gallons, get charged for, you know, the rate of 25 for the first four cubic yards and 410 for each additional. And then eight, page eight, does make reference to, under technological services, that the city and AHRC will work together over the course of the agreement to provide uniform refuse and recycling. So I wondered if there was a broad goal that you could identify for us, like, are we moving to 32-gallon? Are we?
President Nysli, some of that comes back to the way that ordinance is written. I do think, I do believe it says 30-gallon in there, which a lot of manufacturers don't make a 30-gallon container. They make a 32 or a 35. That 30-gallon was sort of our unit of measurement to determine, you know, what level of service individual accounts had. So I think that's just some clarification, and I worked with both Ron, Ron Lucas and Rick at Food Enforcement to really kind of make that change, to make it a little bit easier for the residents to say, to get past this confusion of, well, I can't find a 30-gallon container, all I can find is a 32-gallon. So I think that helps clarify that that way. When someone goes to buy a container, they're buying the right size, and they know they're doing the right thing.
Sure. So I guess my question is, are we moving citywide to 32-gallon containers? If that's the case with the new contract?
I think that at some point, we're going to have to revisit the ordinance, because with our big blue boxes and some other things, is that that ordinance hasn't been updated for a whole long time.
Okay.
And that this sort of issue needs to be addressed.
Okay.
So with these, it has to catch up with the times.
And I have had conversations with, specifically Ron Lucas, about standardized trash containers, analogous, you know, or synonymous with the standardized recycling containers. There's a lot of things to think about in that, and I, you know, I think that's down the road a little bit, but specifically, that 32-gallon just assesses that size currently over, you know, people from different ends.
Okay. And other questions amongst council members? Yes. Councilmember McGee.
I wondered if you could answer my question about the cost. Could you break down the increase in the contract from 81 to 111,000?
Yes, sir. Well, the, it doesn't, to my knowledge, in this contract includes the compost, that would be a separate contract. The cost increases do, mostly due to the impact that the global markets have had on the recycling industry in the United States. There's some other factors that are leading to some of the cost increases in there, increases for the contract, but the decrease in the value of commodities has effectively reduced our revenue from those materials by 50% in the last eight months. So it's pretty significant for us, and not just for us, but recycling centers across the country. So that has a lot of downstream effects as well. Obviously, it costs the same amount to sort those materials, but we're getting less out of them. Some of the other materials have changed even more drastically. Glass recycling specifically was a revenue for us, but now it is a cost of almost $25 per tonne to get glass recycled. Unfortunately, there's only one glass recycling facility in the state of Ohio, and it's in Dayton. Glass is very heavy, costly to transport. So there's a lot of individual factors that lead into that, those cost increases in there. Aside from the commodities market with recycling, the uptown area is a big concern of ours for our organization and the amount of material that's coming out there specifically for trash. So we're trying to align the cost, the real cost of what costs to provide the service with this cost increase.
Sure. Councilmember McGee? One more question, then we'll move to Councilmember Katza.
Thank you. In regards to the uptown area, as you mentioned, I had two questions. One is, are the bars and restaurants recycling uptown where you actually pick them up? And can you explain to us what effect the new trash containers, these compact solar containers have had in, whether they, the cost should not be coming down due to those containers?
The first question, so I don't know if all 100% of the organizations and businesses within the uptown district participate in the recycling. Many of them do. I don't know that exact count, because there's centralized sites in many instances where multiple businesses and organizations or even residents take it to that central location for trash or for recycling. So participation is a little bit harder to attain what it is up there. Specifically with the Big Belly, which is the solar compacting trash and recycling containers, it's been a great addition to the city of Athens, I do believe, because we're getting that material. We've added that recycling service, you know, walking down the street to have those services available versus a centralized site in an alley or behind a building. It has certainly diverted more materials, but compared to the total amount of material that come out of there, it's very, very small compared to the total come out of there.
Councilmember Katza.
Yes, and Mr. Underwood, thank you for coming out tonight and answering all these questions in rapid-fire succession. You are just knocking them down. I had a question, thinking back to when Roger Bales was here, was that last week? I believe he was just here last week. And he said that there were four components, I believe, of, in the recycling stream that they're committed to doing, and is it, please remind me, it's, I know it's aluminum...
I think for the Sound Waste District, it's aluminum cans, steel cans, cardboard and paper.
Okay. And what, and what, after that, I was worried because I didn't hear plastic in there. And so, since you know a lot on the recycling end, and I know that globally plastics are not being accepted in some overseas countries now, what's the risk that we may lose the ability? I mean, are we still going to try to recycle our plastics?
We are going to do our best to continue to recycle rigid plastics, so yogurt cups and water bottles and things like that. Unfortunately, one of the things that we've come up with or have come up against is film plastics. I know this has been a topic of discussion in the past with, you know, plastic bags and all those issues associated with them. However, at this point, we've failed to secure an outlet for our film plastics. So that's one of the negotiating points in the contract is, we're currently taking that because we're contractually obligated to take film plastic. However, in reality, it's going to the landfill because we cannot find a home for it. Now, I say that as a precaution, too, as we come and look at these other plastics, there could come a time where we lose more materials just because there may not be an outlet for them. I hope that doesn't come to pass. We're working hard to make that not a reality. We're a little bit more insulated because we're in the Midwest with some of our buyers, and we have some really good relationships. However, the global markets dictate really the majority of what happens, including the pricing. So with China's ban on mixed plastics and now a Vietnamese ban on all imported materials, that's continuing to change that dynamic here in the United States with all materials, not just plastic, but paper products as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Fall?
One of the things, I think possibly the reduction of international markets is because of our discussion at the federal level of trade barriers and stuff. So I think that that is an issue that we can't argue about at this level, though we can let our representatives know that we're concerned. I'm always concerned that when people talk about refuse, refuse and recycling, everybody knows that throwing something away costs money. And then everybody thinks that recycling is going to make us money. And right now, we know that that's not necessarily the truth, but for me personally and for the city, I think that it still makes sense to be able to separate those out, because there's no steadfast rule that says recycling has to make money. It's like, everybody expects environmental good to be a benefit without cost. You know, it's like, it's bad if it costs something for the community. Well, we're already, you know, it makes sense to divert it, because ultimately, it will come to the market increases and such. And I do not want to hear from people when they say, well, we need just to stop the recycling system and just throw away everything. Well, that would increase our costs. Big, you know, refuse and tipping fees are only going to go up. So I want to emphasize that for people. Thank you.
And Councilmember Rice.
Back to your statement about film plastics. If, as you say, there is no market, and you are taking them in, but at the same time, you have to landfill them because there's no place to put them, it would seem that the logical step would be that we do everything we can not to have film plastics going into the waste stream to begin with. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I wholeheartedly agree. However, we're still going to have to deal with them. Although the city of Athens is our largest customer or client, if you will, we still also provide services throughout the community, throughout Athens and Hocken County. So, you know, we're going to try to put on a full-force educational campaign outreach about film plastics, you know, about us not taking them, at the same time educating the customers and the public at large on how to steer away from those materials, you know, reduce your consumption of them at the same time. But as a reality, we're going to have to deal with them in our facility, and there's a cost to that, so.
Well, if you landfill it, there's a tipping fee, and if you don't have to pay this tipping fee, you're saving money, right?
Yes.
Okay. So ultimately, everybody would save, save everything if they just didn't use it.
I agree.
Am I missing something, or is it...
No, unfortunately, you know, it's down to consumer and individual choice, I think, without, you know, bonded in any of our control. But yeah, if we can avoid it, that would be great.
And I do believe we have one other person here from Athens Hocking. Did you want to make a comment, Mr. Newman? If you, you have to go up there.
Yeah, I have to go up there.
And announce your name, and we'll have just a few more minutes, and then we'll wrap up the conversation, and so we can move on to all other things.
I just wanted to add to that. Okay, like plastics, film, I mean, we're not talking about a huge amount of, I mean, there's a lot of it out there, but it compacts to not very much. So over the course of a year, you know, we're talking, what, two semi-truck loads?
Yeah, approximately 40 tonnes a year.
Which isn't a lot. Which isn't a lot. Now, the glass, on the other hand, okay, so that's, you know, costs at $25 per tonne, but the landfill is, what, $41 per tonne? So it's still cheaper than landfill. It's bad, but it's not as bad as landfill. And we go throughout. I mean, uptown here, more glass comes out of uptown than the whole rest of the city by far. With the whole rest of everything, we get everywhere. So, and that's, it's heavy, and so that would be a big cost, a bigger cost to just throw it away.
Okay. Thank you for that perspective. Yes, Councilmember McGee?
I had just one other question concerning the special events. I just wanted to make sure that I understood this. For the special events, mainly the move out for Ohio University where we're paying 14,900 for the move out fee, that covers those community groups that collect, like furniture and things, and distribute them to nonprofit groups, is that right?
It does not.
It does not? Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, that's specifically for us to provide those additional shifts in manpower, sort of almost around the clock or like a 10-day period before, during, and after move out.
Thank you, and I just wanted to thank you for all the work you do during that time period because it's tremendous.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to my guys, they would certainly appreciate that.
Yes, and it was an incredible sight going down Mill Street where just hundreds and hundreds of pieces of furniture. And your crews were out there with like two or three trucks and crews of people. So maybe we can also do some education to people too about.
No small feat.
Right. Trashing, trashing all the furniture. I hate to see it feel like that. But anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for all your efforts. Thanks for that perspective, too. Mayor Patterson, perhaps you have some comments?
I have a couple of questions. And one is.
Is there no market out there for film plastics?
There is to a limited extent. However, the contamination issues that we deal with prevent us from utilizing those markets and those buyers.
Gotcha.
It has to be so much cleaner than it currently is. You can imagine what happens to a Kroger bag or a grocery sack when you put it in the back of a packer truck with everything else, you know, all the other glass and milk jugs and beer bottles and pop cans. That contamination level is one of the biggest issues. And it's a consequence of single-stream recycling. You know, it's definitely, the benefits outweigh the negatives, but one of the consequences of that is some materials get more contaminated or have less of a value.
Okay, well, that makes me feel a little better because all of a sudden, I was thinking, and you just mentioned Kroger a second ago, and I'm thinking, doesn't Kroger still have a plastic bag receptacle sitting there? I'm seeing Mr. Newman shaking his head, no.
So yeah, and that is really the best method, and that's what, you know, we're going to, HRC is going to continue advocating, even though we can't take it, there are still some outlets to take it.
And I think Walmart also collects plastic, film plastic bags, unless it says differently.
As far as, you know, extended producer responsibility for all these different things is a great strategy for managing materials. It's thought a lot more in candor than it is in this country, is somewhat than in this country, but most producers don't like it because they have to hassle with it. That's why, you know, whenever a bottle bill comes up, it's fought vehemently by industry.
Right.
Okay, so I had two more questions. One of them being, since this is the industry in which you live in terms of finding markets for recyclable materials, what does the forecast look like over the course of the next couple of years?
It appears pretty grim. I want to be optimistic about it, but we're, you know, the reality is, from October of last year to where we're at now is a dramatic difference. There's always those ebbs and flows with the commodities market, just like any other market. However, you know, those regulatory changes in China with their import, you know, one of, the United States' largest export is waste. And, you know, where that was going is now changing. So we're going to have to deal with that. The United States has a lack of infrastructure in the United States to deal with these materials. Until we can overcome that, and it's likely going to take years, it's going to be a slow improvement, I think.
Okay.
Could you say that again, that the export market, for this export market is the biggest export that we have?
Oh, I said it's one of the biggest the United States have, is exporting our waste essentially. And one of China's largest imports is that waste. And it's not just us, other industrialized countries in Europe also send material.
But that should be a take-home message to people.
Oh, absolutely.
That's, in my mind, that's pretty horrifying, you know, that there should be exports and imports of technology and, you know, reusing things better and energy products, but not our waste. I mean, that's horrifying.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we close?
I had one more.
Okay.
It's not a question, it is a comment. And that is, this is in reference to Member McGee and your comment about, or question that you had about Big Belly, is there's a big difference between the uptown recycling franchises that receive a lot of what comes out of the bars. As everyone knows, the city of Athens, it's not permissible to be carrying an open container of alcohol down the city streets, and so therefore, you're not going to see that level of recyclable waste stream going into the Big Bellies. What Big Belly's, what they have seen, and if Mr. Underwood would like to chime in on this, I'd be more than happy to have him do so, but having Big Belly for the first time is pedestrians are putting recyclable, and as I mentioned to council last time when I gave the report on 38% of the waste stream of what is waste being diverted to recycling, that didn't exist before, because you're not going to find people taking their recyclable materials and walking behind into the franchise bins and throwing it in there. That's where the bar owners and the bar backs and everybody are going to be taking all the bottles, cans, whatever is generated at the bars, which is significant, by the way. But we're talking, I think, two very different things. We're talking about pedestrian recycling on Court Street versus the recycling franchise that is, again, by and large, going to be our restaurants, the bars, and some of the other retailers.
Mayor Patterson, that's a great point. Before, all that material that was collected on the sidewalks was getting landfillled 100%. So that diversion is.
Okay, this is going to be, I think, our last question in closing, and then we'll move on to the other items.
Okay, President Nysley, thank you. And actually, this is just more of like a PSA, because here recently at my house, my wife started drying out the plastic bags before she puts them in the recycling. So what kind of, I mean, you want to see clean material coming out of those blue bins. So I mean, what would you like to see, I mean, you want to see beer cans rinsed out? Do you want to see, I mean, what would be your perfect, when you open up the lid, what's your perfect mix in there of material? I mean, what does it look like?
That's a great question. The ideal situation would, everyone would put their material on there loosely and not bagged and not compressed, and everything rinsed out and remove as much food waste or food residues as possible. So the cleaner the better.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
On our website, we have kind of a virtual tour of our municipal recycling facility, but if you haven't been out there, I'd invite you to come out and check it out, see what kind of works.
And it does drive home your question about how things do need to be cleaned up left so that things can be sorted easily by the machinery.
Some of it out there, but it's worth a trip.
Mixed materials is also important not to be throwing in things that are mixed materials, paper bags with some cellophane liner so you can see through the bag, it's your bag of cookies or whatever, that those kinds of things are not helpful to what your operation is.
Everything was standardized, you know, it might be an issue, but.
Great. Well, thanks for your time, and thanks for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, all right. Good discussion, good questions. Thank you. We now have the city county sewer project design services. And I think we were, we have had some brief discussion at the mayor's and auditor's meeting about this. And as I understand, we're looking at, it's partially appropriations too, because what we're looking is the $300,000 city share, I believe this is what we're discussing for this, of the design. And this is for the connecting the city and the county, or the county sewer system to ours, if that is eventually approved. And we would be reimbursed for this design fee. And it was originally 350,000, but it's been negotiated, renegotiated down to, with a design firm, down to 300,000. So, and we have Auditor Heck. Good.
Yeah, I need to address this.
Okay.
The amount of $300,000, yes, should come back to us from the county. However, we don't have the money upfront to do this the way it was put out there. The original plan was to transfer 100,000 from the water debt, sewer debt fund, but we only have 96,000 unappropriated in the sewer fund. And I am also asking for a payroll appropriation in the sewer fund of $50,000, which leaves 46,000. So basically, the entire 300,000 would have to come out of the sewer debt fund, which has 370,000 unappropriated. So that would almost wipe that out. So any other use of that sewer debt fund would be an issue. And just to put it out there, to put some of this sewer fund in perspective, our total debt service per year is 1.3 million. So we have a payment coming up of $613,000 July 1st for, this is for the wastewater plant improvements. You know, that was a really big loan we took out. So our payments are about a million dollars a year, and then we have a short-term loan of $250,000 that we took out before we actually started the improvements. Anybody remembers all that? It's been, you know, an ongoing, it took a few years actually to finish that project. So, so yeah, we have large debt payments in the sewer fund. So sometimes that looks pretty healthy and we do pretty well, but when it comes to adding these new projects and things on there, so that's really the only way we can appropriate the money for that design right now is to use the sewer debt fund, which will pretty much almost wipe that out, so.
And would that place us in jeopardy then for loan payments later in the year?
Well, it could, which is something, this just went, we did talk about this in our auditor meeting last Tuesday, but then I was out Wednesday through yesterday. And so the closer I looked at it, yes, come December, we, is when that $250,000 will be due, the short-term note, on December 7th. And OWDA takes those loan payments on January 1st and July 1st. So the money to make that payment has to be in our bank account in December, even though it's considered a 2019 payment, the next one will be.
So this is sobering news.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Reisner is Chair of Finance.
I remember writing in our discussions last week, the City Service Safety Director said that the 300, or the, what, 275 is now we pay, but once the project gets going and tap fees start being collected, we will be reimbursed for our expenses for that. Am I remembering?
Right, we're supposed to get that money back from the county. That is an expense they cannot, aren't allowed to use their money for upfront. So if we go ahead and do the services, then they will reimburse us.
Well, my.
However, the problem is the cash flow money right now.
Yes. That's what I was getting to, is that, well, one, it's predicated on the assumption that the project will go through, okay, that after the study, after we do our part, that the entire project itself will happen. Well, it most likely will, but there's always a possibility that for whatever reason out there, it may not. So we've put out $275,000, now the county has no way to reimburse us. I mean, that's a possibility. The second thing I'm getting at is that those tap fees will come on gradually. As the project proceeds, as the actual construction begins and that there is something to tap on to, then you can collect a fee. Then the county can pass it on to us.
Right, I don't know what their schedule for repayment is. Is it if we have to wait till these capacity fees come in and things like that?
Well, how else could they pay?
Or if they're allowed to expend that money from their grant money, maybe the mayor knows more, once.
The loan money.
The work is done. So yeah, if we have to wait and that it trickles in throughout the year, that would probably also be an issue. But, and my understanding is, they agree, I would think, I'm sure that people have thought about this, that are negotiating this, that the county, you know, if we spend money on something for this project for them, whether it ends up, although I think we're all pretty sure it's going to happen, but if it doesn't, that they still have to pay us for that. We would never have expended that money without this project agreement. So the mayor probably knows a little bit more about the specifics of the agreement. So yeah, it would be the trickling in of the repayment that I'm more worried about.
Like the timeline. Mayor Patterson, do you have any comments or?
You know, when I saw this email from Auditor Heck this afternoon, it really caused me to pause and to sit down and meet with the county commissioners and kind of get to the bottom of the, kind of the dilemma that we're in with moving this forward. Again, my understanding is when the grant money was released, and it hasn't been yet, I mean, this is, it would be the $300,000 on our end for design. And as we roll forward, when they release the grant funding, at certain point, that's when I understood we would be getting our now $300,000 back in return, as opposed to waiting on the tap fees. But, Senator Reisner, you raise a great question, and it is, I think, my duty to sit down with the county commissioners again and go, tell me how this is going to work out, given that we're, we, you know, I'm not comfortable taking this thing razor-thin on our end. What Auditor Heck sent me, and to President Nysley as well earlier, is, and Auditor Heck, you just mentioned this, is that we have another $452,000 payment in January.
Yeah.
Right. So, and we also have to keep in mind the cash flow in the sewer fund. You know, that money comes in from the service charges. So it trickles in throughout the month and throughout the year. We don't get big fat payments on January 1st or quarterly or anything like that. We bring in about $84,000 a month in sewer fees. Currently, our fund balance, which is the money we actually have in the bank, is only 76,000. So we have money appropriated and we have money unappropriated, but even if we appropriate the money we have available to appropriate based on our estimate of, you know, revenue throughout the year, we can't spend it until that money is actually in the bank.
Right. Okay, Councilmember Paul.
Well, there's one email here that says, from Andy Stone, our new safety director. It says the reimbursement for this money won't come until construction starts a year or more. So it doesn't sound like the requirement for fees doesn't have to happen. It sounds more like it's the commencement of like spending the grant money, that we get the money back.
That's how I understood it as well.
Yeah. I think it should be recognized that some of the work that will be done helps us anyway in our system. Some of the issues that have come up is replacement in some of these reservoirs and things. And I would like to point out that the grand illustrious Columbus, the legislature up in our capital, is looking at issues about charging, making it so that we can't charge areas outside of our area, different fees. And that was an issue that came out, and I brought it to you guys, and it's still out there. So another time that Columbus is taking away our local control and makes these projects a lot more difficult to make happen if we can't charge the users outside of our community or city more, because it does cost us more to take in their wastewater. So that's another whole issue that we have to keep an eye on.
Okay. We'll wait for additional information. Are there? Are there any questions? Councilmember Reisner?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I, sorry. I guess my question, question is, given the restrictions that the auditor has, has come up with in terms of the monies available, how do we proceed on this then? I mean, what is our, what's our course of action? We, where do we find the money?
Typically, we take out a short-term loan. If this were designed for our own project within the city, that's what we do. And we, we, um, you know, take a short-term loan out to pay for it upfront.
How short-term?
Well-
Six months, something like that?
Well, we can do it that way. Probably we would take it out for a year-
Okay.
And then just pay it back early. That's the other thing about those short-term loans, we can pay those back early. We can't do that on the OWDA loans, our parking garage loans, these, the bonds that are amortized.
And what's the percentage points? How much is the interest on short-term loans if we do it locally?
Yeah, I think it's like 0.7 now. It might be over 1%, though. We haven't taken one out in just a little while.
Right.
And, you know, interest rates are going up. Still far and above less than anybody else we can get it from. So, you know, I could get that information. But they can only give me an, an interest rate that's good for 30 days at a time. But even if it went up, it wouldn't be much more than what they would give me. So I'm happy to do that and let you know as soon as I find out.
That'd be really helpful.
I think that will be helpful, plus additional information you might find out from the commissioners.
I will, and my staff will be tracking and looking at all options. We will keep counsel abreast what we're, what options we look at. Again, to talk about a short-term loan, we would certainly look at a loan long enough to meet the construction, beginning construction timeline, uh, and probably overlap slightly and then segue in where we know things are safely moving along.
I'd rather go that, that way than deplete our funds.
Right, and strap us if something else comes up.
Councilmember Kotsas?
Could we then attach that interest to the, I mean, can the county pick that up? I mean, my understanding, you know, with discussions I've had with, with Andy Stone, whether he's been the engineer or, or City Safety Service Director, this is not the city's, we're not driving this, this project. I think it's good for us to participate. I think it's good for us to think, you know, outside, outside our borders because who knows when, what our borders are going to look like in 40 years from now. It'd be great to have everybody hooked up if, if we end up annexing at some point. But, you know, that's, of course, that's a conversation decades down the road. So I don't know why I'm mentioning this right now, but, but anyhow, I mean, I don't feel like this is-
We provide water to the plants.
Yep.
And it, it's just for the good of everyone to have healthy communities around us. And, because we are all affected by each other. And so if we, can we have this new plant? And, um, yeah, to have this done out there too, you know, to have sewer lines rather than septic, failing septic systems and all of that. It's all a good thing, it's part of being a good, good neighbor, but, um, you know, we have to watch for it.
Well, and I think the Health Department has said this is the single largest health issue for us, for our community. So we really do need to think outside of our, yeah.
And the EPA will come down on them sooner or later. So it's going to happen.
And I'm sorry, but we can't attach that interest to the 300,000 or the 275 that the county would pay us back.
That would have to be part of the agreement with the county, I'd say.
All right, great.
Good question.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your help, Auditor Heck. All right, I think that covers the committee of the whole items, and we'll move on to Transportation Chair by Councilmember Kotsas, and he'll be joined by Councilmembers Grace
There's a delegate in the room. So we appreciate you being careful.
Okay.
All right.
Well, great, well, thank you, President Nicely. We just have two topics to, to cover this evening. And the first one, we actually, we do have a guest here tonight who's been waiting patiently through all of these different, um, other topics, but has probably learned a lot. But we have Paige Alas from, from the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau to talk about a new summer event that's going to be the second week of July.
While we're waiting for the things to get passed out, I'll just say, attending this meeting always makes me appreciate that I work in tourism. I've heard about sludge, I've heard about recycling, I've heard about a sewer project. It's amazing, um, the depth of knowledge of people in our county and in our region, what they know about these things. But again, it makes me really glad to work in tourism, so. Thanks for having me, I'll be really brief. We, as you know, three years ago, we launched Ohio's Windy Nine. It's one of the first curated collection, collections of motorcycle trails in the Midwest. It's the only one in Ohio, and it has brought us so much business. We're very excited to be going into our third summer with the Windy Nine. And as a result of our efforts, we have been able to, um, host the national gathering of the Vulcan Riders Association this summer. So they'll be with us, technically their event runs July 10th through the 12th. Most of the riders that are coming in, it's about 225 of them that are registered so far, will be in most of that week. So, um, probably the 8th through the 14th, most of them will be arriving on the evening of July the 9th, that Monday night. So this sheet just gives you sort of a little overview of it, the National Vulcan Riders Association, it actually is an international organization. And we'll be seeing riders coming from all over the country. This is one of two national gatherings that they're hosting in 2018. And they selected Athens, um, after touring all over the country, they selected Athens because of our Ohio's Windy Nine project. So they'll be riding the routes of, uh, the motorcycle trail while they're here. They're going to be headquartered at the Ohio University Inn, and I really want to show a lot of appreciation to the staff there, particularly Betsy Behringer, who is instrumentally getting this group to us. This is the first large motorcycle association rally that we have hosted here. And we're very excited to start with them, they're very family-friendly. It's the Central Ohio Chapter of Vulcan Riders who will be coming here. Patrick Shannon and his team have put together a really amazing visit for them. So it's going to be a little bit of a learning process for us, but also a huge opportunity to host a really nice group of people. We anticipate about 500 people in town for this event, so. So they came to us and basically said, "Hey, we'd like to have some kind of way to gather uptown, we really like your uptown." They've been coming to visit a lot, uh, to do site visits. And, um, so, um, we have, um, sort of put together some thought about how we could have them ride in and start their initial gathering Monday night in the uptown Athens area. We know there are a lot of street closures for Court Street over the course of this summer. And so we're really looking at that block on Union, the new block, the fancy block, between Congress Street and Court Street. That gives us Jack O's and VW3's and a couple of other places in there. It's fairly flat, and we think it'll be enough room to park 225 motorcycles. We're looking at a time between, yeah, I know, they, it's not like parking cars. Yeah, they're, with precision, too. They probably all ride in at the same time, and well, I don't know how it's going to work, but, uh, so we're looking at possibly hosting their ride-in gathering from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM that evening. And we realize we are a little behind the curve time-wise in getting an ordinance approved and letting this happen by July the 9th. The impact of these riders coming in and spending a week with us will equate to about $900,000 in local spending. So this is hugely important to us. And as being the, our first rally that we've hosted here, um, we really want to roll out the red carpet. We really want to show the Athens hospitality, and we really want to be able to experience that so that we can use that as a model to get other rallies here. And, um, so we're before you asking if we can move forward with blocking, that block of Union Street during that time for their ride-in rally on the 9th.
Okay, and so the, and, so from 5:00 to 9:00, any setup required? Are we going to have to do a closure slightly beforehand, I assume?
We'll have to do a closure slightly beforehand because we will have, I, I imagine we're going to have a tent set up and a very small sound system. There's not going to be any vending or beer sales or anything like that. We'll probably have to bag the meters, I would assume, which we're happy to cover the cost on that, so.
There's no meters in that block.
Oh, well, there's no meters. I forgot, yeah. We'll have to, uh, well, we'll have to put something up so that people know that if they park in there, they may get trapped in until 9 o'clock by some really nice spot.
Okay. You know, and it was, now, I remember when clerk, clerk of council, Mrs. Walker, mentioned that you were coming to talk about this, I was thinking, oh, great, it's another weekend street closure request, and I was wondering how many, when's, when's, when's the, you know, yeah, when's the camel's back going to get broken? But, but a Monday evening, I mean, I guess I'm, am curious, have you, have you spoken with, with Ardo Strike or any of the other business owners across there?
We have not yet.
Okay. I mean, it would seem like if you're delivering 200, giving the ability to park 225 vehicles and have families up there on a Monday evening.
On a Monday evening.
Yeah. But I would still be curious to know what, what the-
We're happy to talk with them.
And then, um, I believe our schedule moving forward, we might be able to get three reads out of this if, and we probably will have a special session in June as we, as we're tying up loose ends before we go away on vacation. So we have, we have two reads already, so I think a, a third one is probably going to appear. So I don't think we have to do anything, um, in a suspension sense. But yeah, that would probably be about my only, my only worry. I mean, the, the, since it's not a weekend, and it's not Court Street, it's, it's Union, so, you know, the, the rest of traffic isn't necessarily going to be impacted. But let me turn this over to questions for anybody else here. Oh, yes.
My initial thought is that the Uptown businesses will likely be pleased to having that many patrons coming in, into town during a typically slow, slow time. So thank you for, for your work on this.
We also think it's a great way for them to get introduced to the uptown Athens so that as they're here the rest of the week, they know where to go, where to eat, and where the fun is, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Administration?
I may have missed it, and I didn't get a handout. What was the date that we're talking about?
July 9th.
July 9th, it's Monday, July 9th would be the, the closure. The, the, the actual event spans over many, it's-
The, the dates of the event are technically the 10th through the 12th. However, the majority of the riders are arriving the 8th through the 9th and staying through the 14th through the 15th. So there are some that want to stay through the, the launch of Brew Week. We're like, well, okay.
And that's a good point, we probably don't have anything else that's happening. This, this is, leads up to Brew Week, because Brew Week starts-
This leads up to Brew Week, right. We actually, we have a, a smaller group that is coming in the weekend before, a group from Chicago. They'll be in right after the 4th of July. And then we have another smaller group that will be coming in the early part of Brew Week. So we have some pretty steady business from it, but this is our largest group and our most organized association group, as opposed to just rider clubs.
Great, yes.
This is my own ignorance.
Yes, please.
What Vulcans is, what the National Vulcan Riders Association is.
The Vulcan, thanks for asking. I know so much about motorcycles, because I've never ridden one before. The Vulcan is a touring motorcycle that is produced by Kawasaki, and it has an international cult following to it. But it's a, it is a big cruising motorcycle. We actually traveled to a couple of national motorcycle shows over the winter. And in fact, we went to one of the largest ones in the country in Chicago in February, and the Vulcan dealer was there. And so we stopped him and said, "Hey, we're from Athens." And he was like, "Oh, yeah, we can't wait to be there." And it was exciting to be somewhere like Columbus or Chicago where people knew about our riding trail, and especially the Vulcan riders that came by the booth who were planning to come and visit us. So it's a great way to sort of spread the word about Athens.
Thanks.
Yes, Mayor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad it was the 9th, because I was sitting here freaking out thinking this is Brew Week, uh, which is the ever-popular keg-tapping ceremony that Monday night.
Right.
But it does fit nicely between Boogie on the Bricks, which is June 30th, if I'm not mistaken, and then filling the, the doldrums of early July, after the 4th of July, and then into, to Brew Week. My only comment is going to be one of logistics, because I don't really recall a time that we've had, say, a car show or a cruise-in that had 250 vehicles of any type. Maybe coming close would be when King Midget would, was set up. But again, that's about comparable size to these. So I think we just need to coordinate to where they're coming into that area because it is a one-way stretch, so Richland or West Union.
We'll work out a route with Patrick Shannon, and he'll handle the logistics. And so by the next time that we meet to sort of launch the ordinance, we'll have a plan of how they're going to come in. He's promised me that they won't all come in at the same time, but they like to ride together, so, um, which actually could be a lot of fun. But I, I think they're really looking at that timeframe as the course of time that people will be arriving over those four hours, so.
Would you please make sure they also get copies of the detour routes into the City of Athens for that?
Yes, we actually had a, a staff meeting about that today, so. Yeah, and not just for this event, but for the whole summer. I mean, these motorcycle riders, they need to know, you know, all the twists and turns. And we have a lot of roads out and a lot of detours going on right now, so. It's fun to keep up with.
And I'm just, I'm just kind of curious, and you may not know, but the, do you know the other cities that we beat out in order to win this?
They didn't, they did not, I, I'll tell you this, when they came to visit, Betsy and I, we asked, you know, "Where are other places that you've been?" And they've been to Deals Gap a couple of times in North Carolina, which is a huge touring destination for motorcycle riders. But he basically said, "We went to the meeting, we brought your map." We were, a couple of us were charged with bringing one location to the meeting. And he said, "We showed up with the map and with the information, and they said, 'We don't even want to know the other choices, this is our choice.'" And it was really based on the collection of the trails that we have. So it, it was easy business that way.
Great.
So we like it when that happens.
Great, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And then now moving, moving into, actually, something, something a little bit more lasting, the, the Northwest Bike Way Spur. So this is the LPA agreement that is in project authorization for this connection of our, of our bike path going from, and this is, if we, if we remember back, this is Phase 3 of the, the extension that leaves the West, uh, West State Ballfields and cuts over the, over the river. Is that correct? It does, yeah, it does, okay, I was trying, I couldn't remember if it was Margaret Creek or, but it is the Hocking River that goes over, and, and it ends currently on Arbitage Road. This is the final phase that is going to make the ascent up into University Estates and really connect in one of our, one of our most disconnected neighborhoods in the city. And so this ordinance that is coming forward, I'm just going to pull up some numbers here, I have them in a few spots. The, um, the big thing is we are looking for, it's about 300 and some thousand dollars is the bid. The city, uh, the total project's going to be a little bit over $400,000. See if I can find this here.
I think the grant's 311.
Yes, you got it. Yes, I'm sorry, thank you, Chris. Yeah, the, um, the grant is for 311,659.20. The city's, uh, uh, match is going to be a total of $98,115, and that's from Fund 220. But this is really to, to put the bid out, to, to start looking to see if we can, we can, um, get this started. So, um, the mayor, do you have, do you have additional information on this, on this project at this point?
No, I think you summed it up well.
And I know, I did have some conversations with, with Andy Stone earlier this year about this project, and, um, he did want to incentivize this project so that we could, he, we don't know if we're going to get this done this year. And that's, and, and so he might want to try to figure out a way to encourage a contractor to get it done late in the fall. But there's so many variables, as we know, with East State Street that we had last year, we were unable to pave when, when we wanted to. There's, there's a chance that we may not be able to do it, but there is, there is a, there is a want to try to, try to get it done this year. If not, we're probably looking next year, uh, construction season to, to have that happen. Do we have any, any questions at this point? Mayor, do you have anything else? This is...
No, this is, again, this is a wonderful project that we've received money for, and we'll, again, complete Phase 3 of the Northwest Bike Passer.
And you, and you shared with me, and I, and I lost it here in my, in my file, the date to have this done is, it's in July's, or is it, no, June 26th?
June 25th.
June 25th. We believe we'll be able to get three, three reads, but depending on any special, it would have to depend on when a special session happens in June, whether or not we run it for three reads or have it suspended on the 2nd, so.
Yeah, because we do need to get that LPA agreement out.
Okay. And with that, I would like to close the Transportation Committee.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Finance Committee will be next, with Councilmembers Reisner as Chair and joined by Councilmember Butler and Crowell. Okay. And I do believe we have one other person here, possibly for the delinquent debt collection.
Okay, well, we have two bullet, bullet point items, delinquent debt collection agreement from the municipal court, and of course appropriations. For some reason, we, we seem to have some of those. So first of all, let's tackle the delinquent debt collection. I think it's, a copy of the agreement is on everyone's computer. I have to confess, I know very little about this topic, so we have an expert in the audience. If you'll step to the podium, give your name, rank, and serial number. You can explain it to us.
We at Municipal Court do not give out serial numbers. I'm Tanya Dye. I'm the clerk at Municipal Court. Essentially, what we're looking for is to hire the Attorney General's office to do our debt collection for past few court costs and fines. We've restarted our dunning notifications pretty much from the very beginning because it had been phased out for a while. So we were trying to get that restarted, and so we're starting everybody back out who owes anything to the court. Notification that, you know, we are now starting to look at all of these and just start making your payments for further action will be anticipated. Part of that further action would be to passing them on to the Attorney General's or whatever means they have to utilize, which could be income tax refunds, lottery winnings, anything else.
Wage garnishes, that sort of thing? So you would supply the Attorney General, I mean, the court would supply the Attorney General with the pertinent information, and then they would, through their mechanism, pursue the matter?
Correct.
Locate the person, and then send them a notice of some sort to, say, start paying or else?
Right.
Okay. And what's required from, from council? Do you need an ordinance of approval, or is this...
An ordinance of approval and signature from the president.
When was the last time the court went after or tried to make any collections?
As far as I know, we've never made formal, a collection policy. We've never hired a collection agency to do this.
Oh, I see.
It's always been in-house through dunning letters. What would happen is, after a certain while, we'd bring them back into court, set a court date for these individuals to come in. Most of the time, they would not, so therefore a warrant would get issued because they failed to meet a court date, which then adds on to the amount that they owe. So we're trying to take the burden off of the local agencies, police enforcement, law enforcement, by tracking down these people on warrants for not showing up to court to explain why they owe fines and costs still. So that's another reason is to reduce those expenditures on our law enforcement.
Will the Attorney General then collect a fee for each person that they collect off of, or, I mean, successfully?
Yes, but it's minor and on par with most of the collection agencies.
I mean, it's not, it's not a blank contract where you say, for $25,000, you'll do this.
No, it's a percentage of what they collect.
Okay.
And I believe it's 7%.
Yeah, there's some "whereas's" in here. It's hard to find that.
It's...
Yeah. This really is very legal.
I have already passed it on to Ms. Eliason for her review. There are certain debts that cannot be collected, such as anybody who is presently incarcerated, we cannot send to collections. Code enforcement violations, we cannot send. So there are some, some stipulations, and nothing over, nothing under $100.
Oh, I see.
But, so we will make those calls.
Question, Member Crowell?
Is there an approximate amount that is owed to the court? Do you know?
I believe it's, I've not done, I don't have those figures, but I know it's in the hundreds of thousands. So I think probably about like 250. Yeah. But that, that's just off the top of my head.
Okay.
With the dunning letters that we have restarted, we have been getting people who've been paying on old fines. But again, because we have such a transient community with the college students, a lot of those people have left the area, so we're also getting a lot of returned mail. So that's where the Attorney General's office can help track down some of those people.
Any other questions from council, Mayor's Office? Any questions on this? We can give, can we get our three readings in, I think? Yeah, so that should be done. And when would this commence?
Like I said, we started with the first letter. We're anticipating having three letters go out to everybody just to get them started, and that's a standard policy, I know, in the retail industry and other places, is to do a three-letter notification. So there's, is time.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. I'm all for collecting debts. It's a good idea to me. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time. Thanks for waiting.
And last item, appropriations. Oh, we have the auditor again. We touched on appropriations in a previous committee, and...
I'm ready to be quick.
Okay, so am I.
So I guess I'd like to make a comment about court and what they're doing, and they've made a lot of changes recently, and the revenue was an issue last year, last couple of years.
Yes.
And I think this will help a lot. This is very similar to what we did with our CCA collections for income tax, and it operated the same way. And I think it's really, you know, I give them credit for trying to do things this way and, and bring that money in that is owed to the city. So that being said, my first appropriation is for the court diversion program. So they, Judge Grace created this diversion program for people to take advantage of, which has been very successful, and it's really a great option for people that make a mistake that they don't want to follow them the rest of their lives. And so it has been bringing money into that Fund 232, and because they now are paying people out of that fund to run the program, they needed just $20,000 additionally for their payroll. And they do have plenty of money unappropriated.
Okay.
So that's the one appropriation. The other one is another payroll request for the sewer fund of $50,000. They've used up most of their overtime already this year, and they're, you know, they've used more than half of their money at this point in the year. We aren't halfway through the year. So Heather, our accounts payable person, calculated about $50,000 they will need additionally for payroll. So...
Okay.
That one, in my opinion, it really has to go through. We have to pay people who work, so, you know, I feel like we need to work, figure out that projects otherwise, but make sure we can pay our employees.
I, I agree with that, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
That's $750, PC 100.
Right, okay. I see that. Any other appropriations, Mr. Mayor?
This kind of came up with Member Kotzis with the Northwest, North, Northwest Bike Passers Lake. My lips aren't working.
Northwest Territory, Northwest Passage.
Yeah. That's right.
Northwest.
What she has put forward is appropriating $311,659 from 589, which is the, for that particular project, Project 296, and then appropriating $98,115 from 220 for that. And then there's authorizing 311, 659, 20 from 589, and $141,110 from 220, and that's to include the design engineering, which is about $43,000, which isn't included in that overall amount that Member Kotzis was...
Well, we have something ready by Monday. We can start talking about it. Any questions on that? Any from the mayor, from the auditor? Okay. Well, that's all I have. Includes this committee.
We'll stand adjourned at 8:43 p.m. and see you all next Monday night, June 4th.